Mama y Flabot ! Bonsoir tout Jean Flabot ! Bonsoir tout Jean Flabot Choisel Saltibas ! Et bonsoir tout Flabot avec les autres qui qu'acouté nous à l'air live la Nounia. Bis naïdi ulani on shay yo kaga deh ? Shay ! Brothers and sisters ! Why am I standing here tonight as the parliamentary rep of Choisel Saltibas ? You heard Monaline earlier. And I can tell you Monaline was not prepared, she was not given any guidance as to what to say. She spoke from the heart. And there are hundreds of other examples in the community of Choisel who would come and do the same if they were asked to. I am here tonight as the parliamentary rep for Choisel Saltibas because of the faith, the trust and the love of the people of Choisel Saltibas. I am grateful and I am humble because of the daily outflows of love and support that I receive from the people of Choisel Saltibas. But brothers and sisters, tonight, I want to make something very clear. Truth be told, truth be told brothers and sisters, there have been several conscious battles of where do I go from here ? Several of them. But brothers and sisters, I can tell you that these battles are no more. These battles have been put to rest because when the people of Choisel Saltibas confront me, they look at me and they said to me, "We put you here. You will stay here and until we tell you to go, you're not leaving here." Brothers and sisters, with that kind of confidence reposed in me by the Choisel Saltibas people, where am I going ? The other thing, brothers and sisters, I want to make very clear here tonight. And that is why I'm very concerned because our Flabot people seem to be very fickle when it comes to making certain mind decisions. If Bradley Felix ever, ever decides to cross a floor, put him in the centre of Choisel and I will be the one saying crucify him, crucify him. Brothers and sisters, if you hear that passion that Monaline spoke tonight and that I said to you so many other people, how can I I would have to run away from Choisel ? And no place in Saint Lucia will be safe for me because Choisel people reside everywhere in Saint Lucia. I also want to take the opportunity tonight to thank the executive of the Choisel Saltibas constituency branch. You could see the hard work in bringing us what we are witnessing here today. And I can tell you something, they work with very, very little input from me. In fact, they will come and tell me, "This is what we want you to do" and I have to follow. So I want to thank them. I also want brothers and sisters to take a moment to thank the national executive of the United Workers Party. I want to thank them for their mobilisation. I want to thank them for the relentless pursuit of keeping Saint Lucia of the sorry state of affairs. I want to thank them because brothers and sisters, we are moving very fast and reckless downhill. Very fast. We are in trouble. I want to thank the national executive for accepting, and brothers and sisters, this is important, for accepting me and my difference in how I pursue my political path. Brothers and sisters, we are all different. We are all different. But as members and brothers and sisters of the United Workers Party, we have one common foundation and that is to put the Saint Lucia Labour Party government out of office. Too many times, too many times, I see us squabbling and fighting each other over petty, petty... We have to be able to put these differences aside, brothers and sisters, and come in our namesake, united, for the cause of getting us out of the misery that we're in right now, brothers and sisters. Brothers and sisters, this Saint Lucia Labour Party administration never, never anticipated an opposition with a fighting spirit and tenacity as we give in them right now. Because we continue to highlight the victimisation, the discrimination and the propaganda and the deceptiveness that they continue to spread, brothers and sisters. And you know what, brothers and sisters? When they feel cornered, they attack you personally. And they attack your family. But we must never, never forget, united we stand, divided we fall, brothers and sisters. They try to rule us with scare tactics and intimidation. Brothers and sisters, our society can never be progressive when many people feel stifled because of perceived repercussions. Brothers and sisters, you hear me ? No progressive society should ever be afraid to speak on what they believe is wrong. And you should be able to speak without having any fear of anybody coming and knocking your door and telling you you're under arrest. Y'all know what I'm talking about. Brothers and sisters, we are in trouble. Osha imun ! Osha imun kwe ! Osha imun ka dimwe ! Lemé alé akai parlament, meni boubaye plime pui ! Sapa saileme ! Maka baye mepui boupaye mepui bemaasa ! But brothers and sisters, when it's wrong, I will say it's wrong. And brothers and sisters, I am on the record. I am on record of saying that all governments must borrow. But you know what, brothers and sisters? We must borrow responsibly. And tonight, I will speak very briefly on Saint Jude's because I know the brother Guy Joseph who's coming behind me. In fact, tonight I said to him, "If he has to auction all the papers he has, he'll get to be a millionaire." He have a lot of information. So brothers and sisters, my point is the borrowing must make sense. The most recent travesty of borrowing over 200 million dollars to fix an 80-year-old structure, brothers and sisters, that is a conversation that we need to keep relevant. That is really and truly insulting our intelligence as Saint Lucia. A very good friend of mine, living just higher up the road, a young lady, I remember before the last election, she said to me that we will lose the elections because we did not finish Saint Jude's. Brothers and sisters, we did not finish Saint Jude's, I agree. But what we were doing, brothers and sisters, was to provide the kind of healthcare that our people deserve. You cannot tell me, and I must tell you, we have the information, we have the documentation to show us that what we were doing was the right thing. We didn't just go on a women's fancy. And the information pointed that the old structure had too many flaws, too many things that would have to be corrected in the long term for us to continue with it for the amount of money it would cost. We left a structure there that would have cost us anywhere between 50 and 60 million dollars. And when we had finished, what we would have had would have been the envy of the Caribbean. Brothers and sisters, it means that the government is pumping away four times what it would have completed, that would have completed the new structure into an old structure. Money is that can do so much for us. And we have heard the other speakers tell you about many of the things that we need. Brothers and sisters, it is a travesty. And it is a travesty that I said we need to keep that conversation relevant, we need to keep talking about it, we need to put it in the face every day, brothers and sisters, because that cannot be right, that cannot make sense. And brothers and sisters, what hurts me, what hurts me is the fact that so many people are quiet. Brothers and sisters, in a way, in a way, we have to feel for some of them because they are scared. They are scared. And again, I tell you, we cannot be living in a righteous society when people are scared to speak. Brothers and sisters, I was just telling my colleagues that after all what the experts from the Labour Party said that was wrong about what they termed to be the box. And we hear about boxes all over the world that are, you know, the finest hospitals. So they call it the box to try to degrade it. But brother, that was a box that was going to make us very proud, eh ? Very, very proud. Only yesterday, I read an article by one of the experts who told the government, you know, "That box, we're not using that box." You know what he said ? He said people are misrepresenting what he said. He said he never said the box could not be used, but he said the box could not be used in isolation. We would have to use some of the other structures to complement. That is what we have been saying all along, brothers and sisters. The new structure would have been for the doctors and the patients to accommodate them and we would have the lunchroom in another place, we would have the laundry in another place, the mortuary in another place. We always said that, brothers and sisters. But now, you're going to pay 200 million dollars. And mind you, they block it because they don't want us to see. More walls will be breaking down. I understood there was a concrete cemetery. When we came in, we found out a concrete cemetery where they were burying a lot of concrete they had broken down. We have another concrete cemetery that we will be seeing, brothers and sisters. My brothers and sisters, my brothers and sisters, I want to speak very briefly again because it's Sunday, I know some of you have to travel very far on the 2.5% levy. Brothers and sisters, that 2.5%, as I said to people, I understand governments have to raise monies in different ways. The timing must be right. You cannot tell me, you recognise the hardships of our people at this point in time. You're not bringing along the price of fuel when the whole market fuel was dropping. You're not doing nothing to relieve the pressure of the people in the supermarkets. Nothing is being done to alleviate the pressures that the people are under. But you put a 2.5% on the people in these hard economic times and you say you're putting the people first. Brothers and sisters, make it make sense for me. The last UWP administration recognised the hardships of that. And that is why Honorable Alan Charsney said we will bring it down incrementally. We started with a 2.5. Had we been in office today, it would have been 10. You know what they did ? They put it up and they say they care for the people. What people ? Who do you care for ? Brothers and sisters, we have not begun to see the suffering that our people will feel under that 2.5%. We have not begun to see it. Because many of the companies are struggling. They want, they recognise the hardships that solutions are facing and they are struggling. Can they continue by the end of the day ? For companies, it's business, it's the bottom line. And who's going to pay for it ? Me and you, all of us, Labour, Flabot, Toutmon. Brothers and sisters, that is what we are going to be faced ahead of us. And I want to tell you, Spider said it earlier, Spider said, "When we return," not "if", "when we return into office, we will remove that 2.5%." And he's right. You know why he's right ? Because that 2.5% does not, it is not in line with common market rules, brothers and sisters. So we will have every right to remove that 2.5% and there'll be a lot more. Because I can tell you, brothers and sisters, people say so many things, well not people, the Labour Party, say so many things about Honorable Alan Charsney. But having been in cabinet with him for five years, I can tell you, this is a man who feels what the people feel. I remember conversations in cabinet when we felt there were certain things that had to be done. And I remember Brother Alan Charsney said, "We cannot put that on the people." Not at this time. I remember that. So brothers and sisters, we must not be of fickle minds and hearts and let the propaganda that the Labour Party has fed us to continue feeding us. Let us stand strong, let us tell them, "We are no longer going to be bamboozled by your pretty words." What they say ? Belle flèche, sans l'ordre. My brother Dominic Fede a little while ago, he said that the SLP government said that that 2.5% will not be applicable on food. Now that is why I tell you, there is no thought process in what's going on. How can it not be applicable on food when there are so many factors involved in the food, either production or manufacturing of food. There is transport that you're going to charge a 2.5%. There's utilities, there's all kinds of things that are on the rise because of fuel prices and everything. The people will feel it ! The people will feel it ! You know, a little joke I want to share with you. Two days ago, I went up to Roblo and I collected some green fig from a family member of mine. I had a green fig and I was telling Black that yesterday. I had a green fig in my vehicle and I passed in the village and I called somebody, say, "Oublé on, 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 tranche, up, up at, um, figvert." I spoke too loud. You should have seen the number of people that cover my vehicle. That's no joke, brothers and sisters. You would not believe the number of people who cover my vehicle for, for, for green... Epi tì konse. Brothers and sisters, I gave a family member a part. You know what she said to me ? "Tut sa mè hasjeme ban, ou hasjeme ban la vio, sa klimé." That is how hard it is nowadays, brothers and sisters. Brothers and sisters, you would have heard from the speakers about various developments in the community of Choisel Saltibas. And truth be told, maybe I'm wrong, I don't go about highlighting what I do, you know, because I always believe the people know. But I've been told that's not been politically savvy. But the people were aware, that is why they brought me back. Brothers and sisters, I just want to mention some of the things that, to me, are a lot more important than a lot of the concrete stuff that we do, we did, or I did in the community. Well, it's, 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 uh, a team spirit because if the Prime Minister did not want to give me or did not give me the, the, the assistance, it would not have happened. So while I may have agitated for it, there was the backing of cabinet for it. Brothers and sisters, there's things that I think that are very important in our community. And before I go there, I want to say one thing. I, the last time I was in parliament, I said, "Just look at the difference in the two governments." And I spoke to 10 million dollars being spent annually on schools versus 1 million dollars when the Labour Party was in government. They jumped high and they said that is false representation because before the monies used to go to the Ministry of Infrastructure and so that is what... But brothers and sisters, if the money was going to the Ministry of Infrastructure for the school, where's the work that was being done ? Because I can tell you, Choisel has the most schools in Saint Lucia, in all the districts. And every single school in Choisel, 10 of them, got significant, some of them got new toilet plants, significant work in, in, in the toilet facilities. You would not want to see what your children were using when they went to the washroom. We rehabilitated every single one of them, brothers and sisters. We provided new roofs, new ceilings, tiling, brothers and sisters. And the Labour Party said that before it was under Ministry of Infrastructure. Well, if it was, and I cannot speak to the other districts, they would have to confirm. If it was, then Choisel was left out of that programme. If it was, brothers and sisters. But brothers and sisters, as I was saying, brothers and sisters, in the community, there are things that we did that we are waiting for the current government to take advantage of for the people. Brothers and sisters, we acquired what we consider to be the heartbeat of Choisel, the sugar, two sugar mills. These were in private hands. We acquired that because we believe that should be forever in the hands of the people of Choisel. You would not hear people talking about that because it's not a concrete structure. But this is so important, brothers and sisters, to create green spaces for our people because we're losing a lot of places for people to recreate. And there were such tremendous plans we had for these two areas. I'm really hoping to see this government forget the politics and work on that. Brothers and sisters, the number of people who are living on government lands that we provide a title to, significant empowering the people. Go to PI and ask the people. Go to there and ask them. And we had recently acquired land in La Pointe to give the people title. Many people have lands, houses on lands that do not belong to them. We acquired the Delce field and adjoining land so that we can put various facilities for the people in Delce. Will this government continue with that project, brothers and sisters ? Brothers and sisters, just a little higher up there, something we never had in Choisel before. I provided funds for them to have built a music room. A music room, brothers and sisters. And I'm happy to see that it's going forward. Pitch students are very excited, taking advantage of another area that they can excel in. Brothers and sisters, water. Water, as they say, is life. And you would believe like a community or like Choisel Saltibas, we would not have a problem with water. But we do have our challenges. Brothers and sisters, we invested over 250,000 dollars in rehabilitating the 120,000 gallon tank in Delce for the farmers, brothers and sisters. The farmers can tell you that this is like green gold to them. We sent a proposal to the Basic Needs Trust Fund and I, and I'm very happy to hear that it was approved. But for some reason, this government is delaying it, delaying it, delaying it. But they can delay, but it have to go, it have to come. Okay ? To erect a 100,000 gallon tank in Victoria that will serve at least 14 communities. When the lady who went up against me, and that you have to take very seriously, le moun kamute yo kadi anything. She said when she gets into office, she will ensure that the Saltibas people no longer have a water problem. Yes, I beat her. But she's still in the cabinet and she can fight for the people of Saltibas. If you care about people, regardless, you're in a position to fight for the people, to provide them with portable water. And brothers and sisters, when I take action on something, I don't just say there, do you ? I went walking in the forest to identify a new source for the Saltibas people to create a dam. I walked down river, brothers and sisters, look, the gentleman is there, he can tell you because they saw when I went up and I had two Asko people with me, okay ? To look, to see where we could provide better water for the people because I can tell you where the water is coming from now in Saltibas, it's drying up. And the condition is not one that, you know, we, we, we want to continue. Oh. So brothers and sisters, there are things that we have done that have not come to the fore. There are so many things that I did in this community that I don't go about saying that I did. But the government continues to fool us because I can tell you, during the summer vacation, we would provide to Choisel 125,000 dollars to clean the entire constituency of Choisel. They look at me and they give me 30,000 dollars and they expect me to do the same thing. And he goes and boasts and say, "Y'all were not given, but we give you something." So brothers and sisters, when, and, and I know the Prime Minister, the Prime Minister, the leader of the opposition made it very clear, be very wary of the half-truths. The half-truths. So they tell you something and they say, "But they say they giving you." Is what they giving me ? But I can tell you, brothers and sisters, when we were in office, the opposition constituencies got the same amount of money that I was getting to clean the communities. It may not have gone to the parliamentary rep because as I said to them, "I don't care if you'll give me the money, clean the community." It's the community I care about. And if you care about this community, you will take care of this community. We had a strong road programme in place for Choisel Saltibas. Strong road programme, I see the state of the Roblo-Montet, Lamaz Road right now. If you drive there, you would ask yourself what is going on. I see the state, I, I, I'm, Herod mentioned it, when you go through Ravino-Guarden, you know, and, and, and come out industry, going down into La Pointe, the state of that road, brothers and sisters. Monsion. Brothers and sisters, you care about people and that is what you're putting people through. But brothers and sisters, I can tell you one thing. The avalanche that will be coming down to vote this government out. Despite, despite the quiet voices, there is a saying, that is when poupl eat up your roof, you know it ? Because poupl there's were quiet, quiet, quiet. When you see the next election is called, all fall down. And why I'm telling you that, brothers and sisters ? Why I'm telling you that ? And as I, again, you know, I, I went, I was out of state for a little while and you know what they say ? Bradley Abundance, Bradley. One parliament session I go to, they say Bradley defecting. Because I have not been at some of the community meetings, they say, "Where Bradley Pyegyo ?" Brothers and sisters, everything has a reason for it. But brothers and sisters, I can tell you, whenever I travel, I try to meet up with fellow St Lucians. And recently, I was in the US, I was in Brooklyn, and I met with some St Lucians. And this is the first, and I've been in politics before and where I congregate with people and they don't talk politics. This is the first time that group was so strong on the politics. And you know what they said to me? Whenever elections is called, we're taking that flight and we're coming down to put this government out. That is the strong will because they're embarrassed by where we are on the whole stage now. So brothers and sisters, I am telling you, if you look at the numbers, if you look at the figures, you will see that a great percentage of people stayed away from the polls. A great number of people stayed away from the polls. For whatever reason, maybe the beautiful language of the Labour Party got to them. Some of them were not sure what was, and we have to take some blame for that. We have to take some blame because we thought that St Lucians would see through the bluff. We have, we must never take things for granted again. And that is why we are responding the way we're responding now. And you can see our town hall meetings are growing stronger and stronger and stronger. Don't be surprised of various things that might happen to try to prevent our continuation of our town hall meetings. Because when you see a man is cornered and he's scared, anything, anything. That is how we have this current Labour Party administration. They're backs against the wall because we recognise that the decisions they are making are not in the interest of our country. We are speaking out against it and they would rather us stay quiet, brothers and sisters. So brothers and sisters, I see the man of the time has indicated to me that my time is up. We will be hearing a lot more of me. You'll be seeing a lot more of me, brothers and sisters. And I don't care who they send against me. The love, the faith and the trust that the people of Shouazel has disposed in me will continue. And whoever you send, back to the boundary. Good brothers and sisters, I thank you and have a good night.